We will get started. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. We have a quorum present with one of us on Zoom, Andrew Spence. So, given that, we will begin with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
There's some more chairs in that closet, I think. They're not, they're not.
Okay, we'll begin with an approval of our minutes from the last meeting. Do any of the members of the planning board have any questions or corrections or additions to the minutes? Everyone has reviewed them? So then I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Andrew?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know if I can give an aye.
Okay, so you'll abstain.
I will abstain, yes. I will abstain, yes.
No, he, you have the quorum, you just don't have the unanimous vote. The quorum remains. Well, he did, he voted, he abstained, so you have a majority. If not, we'll revisit it next month.
Okay.
Okay, we have a full agenda today. We have three public hearings and two workshops. So we'll try to get through it all. Ask the government to please keep their presentations concise. We're familiar with most of the matters. So, if there's nothing else, we will, we will begin. And the first matter is the Johnson Family Trust. Who's representing? Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do the hearing. Is that right? Listen to the discussions after the presentations.
It's okay.
You can move. I'll move over. Please help yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll give you the everyone. I'm Steve Alex from Lobella Associates, representing the Johnson Family Trust section. Property includes about 650 acres on Andrew Haight Road. Bisected approximately half by Andrew Haight Road. It currently exists as three tax parcels. The tax parcel here that actually fronts on North Mabbittsville. We've got the big large main parcel. And we've got another small landlocked tax parcel here in the northern quadrant. The application is to take those three lots, those three tax parcels, create two lot line changes. So this parcel here over in North Mabbittsville would be combined with some of this land, including this piece on the other side in there. So, create a larger lot. The landlocked tax parcel would be combined here to create a large lot fronting on Andrew Haight. The remainder of the land would be subdivided into four new lots. So, starting with three tax parcels, we'd like to end up with seven. The, oh, I'm sorry, I'll have to move notes over here. The average lot size, about 93 acres. Is approximately 93 acres. Lots range from 16 acres for the existing dwelling to the largest lot of about 152 acres. And most of the lots are large, 110, 151, 136, 75, 86. So they're large lots. When we laid out these lots, we took into consideration the terrain, the soils, the existing wetlands, and other site constraints. And tried to create lots that have ample room, actually a lot of acreage, to support future development of a house or, or farm, whatever they decide to do. At this time, we're not proposing any development on site. Matter of fact, all the land that you see is open meadows and it's actually farmland or hayfields that kind of continue to be utilized that way. The trust is comprised of five siblings. There's a way to equitably divide the land, so each got to share the, the, of course. The last two maps I have on here represent the preliminary plat that we submitted just at an appropriate scale, so that you could see the meats and bounds of all the various all important information. This is the preliminary plat and will ultimately, we hope be the final plat. That's been submitted. Without the color, we didn't.
And this is the same that we saw last time?
Yes, same configuration, just completed. The other one you saw was really a sketch.
Aaron, any issues from your perspective?
No, I think we talked a lot about what we might want to see at the last meeting. We, you know, possibly the buildability analysis. We looked at issues about looking, doing surveys for bog turtles, because there's wetlands. But the board ultimately decided, since there's no development proposed, we can skip that. We did some referrals to, actually one referral that Kristen made to the Health Department, State Health Department, in the village of Millbrook, because the subdivision falls within the village watershed protection zone. So, the law requires that the EAF be filed with those two entities. There's no comment period, but it was sent to them. We prepared a, I prepared a part two and three of the short form EAF for the board to adopt. Sarah prepared a neg deck, negative declaration for Seeger, if you're willing, if you're able, you're willing to go that route tonight after the public hearing. So I think we can just open the hearing and go from there.
Any other comments from?
Should we ask if the board has questions now or after?
Now.
I just was noting, Nan, could you talk what a cluster subdivision is, or if it even applies in this situation?
Yeah, so we talked a lot about it last meeting. It doesn't seem to apply in this case, because there's really no construction proposed. So, if in the future, houses are to be built on these lots, they would be subject to individual building permits. If the building department sees issues with setbacks or other requirements, they would probably, you know, they would go through the appropriate channels, like the ZBA for variance, maybe the planning board for some specific issues. But at this point, there's, they're not proposing to build on it. They might not ever build according to the applicant. So, you know, we determined that all of those parts of the code didn't need to be considered for this.
I just have one other question. If the subdivision is approved, is there a time limit before it could be requested to be subdivided again?
I think the code has a provision in it about that for minor subdivisions. Have to take a look at that.
Which is what this is classified as?
We were, yeah, the board was talking about considering it as minor, since, as Mr. Alex pointed out, it's kind of a net gain of four lots, which falls within that definition of a minor. And I think it's 10 years, but I can look that up and get back to you.
I think it is 10 years, but I just wanted that to be noted, that it's 10 years before this could be in front of, or another subdivision of the parcels. I think, I think it is 10 years.
Andrew, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm glad, I'm glad that question was just asked, because, you know, we're all concerned about some laddering.
Yes.
Right, okay, well, it's been put on the record.
Okay, good.
Could you explain laddering?
You do a subdivision and then you subdivide the subdivided section, so you skirt the regulation, right? Okay, nothing else from the board, then I would like a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. So we are now open to comments or questions from the public. Does anyone have any they'd like to offer up on this matter?
I have a question.
Could you please tell us who you are?
I'm Lois Mandar. I live at 304 North Mabbittsville Road. And I wonder if you could point out where, I can't, even with my glasses, see where North Mabbittsville Road is on the map.
So on this northerly sheet, it's right here along the westerly boundary.
So north would be just about straight up.
Straight up. And then this southerly sheet is, the one here, and here is Andrew Haight.
Got it, thank you. So the biggest lot is the?
Could you please, would you mind just identifying yourself?
Julia Wooderson, live at 339 North Mabbittsville Road.
Thank you.
So the biggest lot there is actually Lightning Tree Farm?
This lot is?
Number eight, I think.
Lot two.
You're welcome to come up and take a closer look.
Which is where the airfield is, I think, right?
Which takes in the airstrip.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Sorry. So where is Lightning Tree?
Here on that floor, there's the house there.
Oh, of course.
And Tupper Farm, where Julia lives, is, oh, this is the Tovers. Does this indicate, so a wetland buffer is this?
Yeah, there's wetlands here. Most represents the adjacent land buffer.
Yeah. And this is the area as it is today. There's no, there's no sculpting of any kind proposed. Thank you. So, who knows the airstrip to me now?
Here, I can show you.
That's just, this line.
I think, yeah, I think that map is.
Here's the overall, here's the airstrip.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Kristen, I just want to confirm, this is online, so this is all published online. So if you wanted to go back later and look in more detail or pulled up on your computer, it's, it's all on there. All the documents at the meeting today should be posted online.
And so to get to those documents, one goes to Town of Washington Planning Board? Or how?
Right now, Kristen Secretary, we're working on our website, so it's a little difficult to navigate, which we're aware of and are fixing. But the way I go in is if there are icons across the top when you get to the homepage, agendas and minutes, if you go in there, scroll down to planning board and click on that, it'll give you the different categories with agendas, applications.
But will the maps, that's really what I'm.
They're in the application.
Okay, having closed the public meeting, do we have a resolution prepared for this?
Can anyone hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, were there any comments?
Yeah, there was Zoom comments for this.
Okay.
I have to say that the Zoom link is, I am audio only. I can't see the, the map or anything, and it's very difficult to, to. I also live by North Mabbittsville. Where, you know, where, where all this zoning is happening and where they want to coincide, and so that I can give comments, and I can't if I can't see it.
I'm sorry, but we provide the Zoom link as a courtesy, and really, if you're, if it's very important, people should really show up. We can't, sometimes this happens. There are many people who are able to access that Zoom link and are on there right now. So we're sorry that you're having that difficulty, but it's not really something that we can fix for you right now.
Well, due to a hand, I can't, I can't.
Yeah.
Chairman Allen, if you would have mentioned that people, that the planning board secretary has the maps here at the town hall, so if anyone would like to come down,
Yeah.
following the meeting and then come see the person if that's helpful.
Right, all, all well and good. Are we in a position to, to vote resolution, or is this required for the consideration?
Well, I just want to make sure, if she's making a comment, are you reopening the public hearing for her to make the comment?
Because we closed it.
Right, I did not acknowledge the folks on Zoom, so probably, are there, are there other comments from folks on, on Zoom?
Yes, hi, this is Peter Ackman.
Okay, then let's, let's reopen the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Okay, we've reopened the public hearing on this. Please identify yourself on Zoom.
Yes, hi, this is Peter Ackman, Jessica Walker on 237 North Mabbittsville Road.
Go ahead.
So, I'm not that familiar with the process here. Will be given an opportunity to object to her opinion?
Yes, please, this is a public hearing, and we are open to hearing your comments and concerns.
Yeah, so I think, and one of the reasons we moved to Millbrook, I think, is that of North Mabbittsville Road, and like the rolling hills around that, I think it's unique to the neighborhood. And I'm worried that zoning and construction will, that. So, we oppose these, these plans.
What, as we understand the application, there's no rezoning, and there's no planned construction, and there'll be no further subdividing for a period of 10 years. So is there something specific to this proposal that you are objecting to?
Yeah, I would assume that the reason for the subdivision is potential future construction. I don't see why else you would do it.
It was presented that this is an estate matter to share the property among the members of the estate.
Okay, and there is no construction, construction being planned or applied for, so that will not be.
There's no construct, there's no construction presented today. I don't know that there's a, would be a prohibition from building on the plots, but there's nothing proposed today.
And there's also no rezoning, zoning remains.
Yeah, this is 10 acre zoning, it's the RR10. And all these lots are actually well above the minimum acreage.
Far above.
Does that address your concerns?
Yeah, well, if the construction comes into play, then there will be another hearing and public forum to discuss, is that what?
No, not necessarily. If they file for a building permit and it's granted, it would not come before this or perhaps any other board unless it required some, there was some impact on zoning. There's no, planning board doesn't deal with, with building permits.
Okay, so what, how, what's the basis of no objection? Just, I don't know. It seems like hypotheticals are there. They're not confirming, they're not legally bound to say that they will not build, but we're also supposed to just take like faith in their word that they're not going to build? Is that, I mean, just for my own mental model of objection?
They're not saying, they're taking, I'm going to make up the numbers, they're taking 500 acres, breaking it up into five 100 acre plots. There remains their property to build on if they choose. They're not creating two acre plots for, for small homes, which would be.
Got it, okay, okay. Yep.
So what we're dealing with here is the, is the.
Okay, well, I mean, this is a little, thank you for, like, it's a bit of educating us, as well as like, you know, we're sensitive to it. We look at that field every day, it's beautiful, and just trying to, like, be an active member of the community.
Well, thank you for, thank you for participating, and I hope this has been helpful. We're not representing them, or, was there another?
And this is, yes, Adrian Popco, 255 North Mabbittsville Road. My concerns are also echoed by the previous speaker that, you know, changing the landscape or doing any alterations, and as she said, you know, we have no, we're taking this on blind faith that, that they're not going to build. We have no guarantee that they're not going to build. And also, we have a lot of very important wetlands in this area. A bog turtle study should have been done, as well as other surveys for environmental concerns. And I think just blindly, I mean, I, I don't know about any of my other neighbors, but I didn't know any of this was going on until we received a notice last week in the mail that any of this was going on. And it appears that this is something that's been discussed several times at previous board meetings. So I'm a little confused at why we're only just now hearing about it. So I do have concerns, I don't mean.
Board meetings are, are open to the public, and all minutes are available. There's no assurance that there won't be construction. This is their property, and they're operating well within our code. And it's, it's, we're talking about a subdivision here.
Their, their permission to build, or their, their ability to build, as you said, if it's a commercial, they would have to reintroduce this for approval?
They would, they would follow the code in terms of building permits. If they wanted a, a variance for something that's outside of the current zoning requirements, they would have to get a variance for it, they'd go for the zoning board. But none of that is being presented, none of that is being contemplated, but none of it is prohibited. Aaron, do you have a?
Yeah, just to say, you know.
I think on the wetlands, we ran out of time, I'll set that. Do you want to just speak to that?
Yeah, so if there's an application for a single family home in one of these lots, which is really the only permitted use here, besides like agriculture and some accessory structures of residential use, which is as of right, they could, if there was going to be an impact to the wetland 100 foot buffer, that would require a planning board wetlands permit. So that would come back to the planning board if they were going to build a house and they couldn't avoid that buffer for the wetlands. If they're staying well beyond it, they wouldn't have to come back to the planning board. There's a commercial project proposed here that's, you know, that's not allowed in RR10, so it wouldn't, you know, that's.
There is not.
If there was ever a commercial, which we're not hearing about, or no one's mentioned, you know, the only way to go about that would change the zoning or get a use variance, which is very hard to do.
And you, and we would, as neighbors, be advised of that request, correct?
Yes.
Same process would apply, there would be a public notice.
A couple of things I'd like to add. At the time of building permit application, every one of these lots that goes in for building permit will also be required to get health department approval for it, subject to wealth. Okay? At that time, the health department will also look at proximity to wetlands and those types of things. Okay? Lot one, we're proposing 110 acres, 26 acres of wetlands. There's 84 buildable acres on lot one. I mean, I could go down through the list, but the smallest lot, lot four, even has 11 acres of buildable area. So there is an excess of buildable acreage on each of these lots.
Where is that smallest lot?
Where's the house?
It's the little one with the house on it. You know the little house that's there?
Number four.
On Andrew Haight Road, there's that small, pretty house.
It's the farmhouse lot.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's adorable house, yeah, that, that's on the small lot. The smallest lot is the one that has the family home on it.
Has the family home on it, okay.
And I think it's 16 acres.
That's a small house, that's a four story.
About that, it's there. I, I printed out the minutes from last meeting and wondered why Chair Jorgensen declined. The health department believed to give permission to file county referral was required. Mr. Werners developed features of the proposal and advised the board to review the plan with possible houses on it. That's a little bit what the DLC does when they have easements. There are sites which are more environmentally and aesthetically pleasing, and would, I think, give a lot of people a comfort level if that were to happen with, before this plan is adopted as is, because Chair Jorgensen made it clear that it was for the future and not what the board is here for tonight. I have nothing against these, against the Johnson heirs wanting to clear up the lot lines and equalize the acreage and all that. That makes all the sense in the world. What concerns, I think, all of us, is the future, the laddering, and the fact that the bog turtle isn't, the bog turtle and the seagrass things are two things that are still very murky. And I think that those should be considered at once, in, in part of the global view.
But in the context of this subdivision request, or some conceptual future development? We're here today to deal with the subdivision.
Right, no, I understand that, but it would be, it would be.
I, I second those sentiments exactly, thank you.
It would be interesting to know if there were going to be any kind of guidelines about where houses could be built with the environment and the, in mind.
Let's have our counsel speak to this.
Yes, I have to concur with the chair. What, the scope of the review is the application before then, so I think it's critically important that you stay within that jurisdiction and what you're reviewing.
Of course.
Otherwise, it is just speculation as to what may be built, what wouldn't be built. The Town of Washington has a code that will ensure compliance, and any deviation from that compliance, as was mentioned about the wetlands buffer, if the bog turtles are impacted, there are other checks to those balances to ensure that the properties will comply. So, what's at issue is just the subdivision of these three parcels into seven, and that is the only thing before this board.
Right.
And I just, Chair, if there's issues with the Zoom and you close the public hearing, one option might be to leave it open for written comment for the people that perhaps couldn't communicate it clearly. Close the oral hearing and written comment.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'd like to move it along if we can, and I'd ask if there are any other comments relative to this matter as presented now. We'll hear them. If not, we have many other items on the agenda. Is there anything else regarding the subdivision, sir?
Sorry, yes.
Please identify yourself.
I just want.
Can you tell us your name?
Thomas Fallby, I live on 247 North Mabbittsville Road, right on that little corner there. I came late, I just got, I got the notice. I'm not here to make a bunch of comments, but I'm just curious, like, what was the purpose for subdividing? Are they actually going to build houses?
There's no, there's. Okay, go ahead, yes, thank you.
You state, the Johnson Family Trust is comprised of five siblings. We attempted to sell this as a whole over years ago, and we're unsuccessful. We settled on subdividing it such a way as to equitably divide it amongst those siblings, and that's what we're proposing here.
And they're trying to just make it so that you can parcel it out and sell it, not make the subdivision? Because is that, is, what I'm looking at right now is the one, two, three, four, five parcels.
Seven lots.
Seven lots. And five, but we're looking at five parcels. We're talking about five parcels.
There's, there's three existing tax parcels. We're going to end up with seven total lots at the end. Or four new lots.
There's no, there's no subdivision.
That's the subdivision.
There's a couple of lot line adjustments also.
Right, that is the subdivision.
Yeah, the word subdivision gets, in people's minds, it's, it's the building of a bunch of houses on small pieces of land, but that, in the terms of what subdivision is here, it's, it's subdividing a piece of land.
Yeah.
This doesn't mean there's, there's no construction proposed, no shovel is going in the ground. This is just on the map, the lines are being adjusted.
There's not 10, there's not five houses.
No construction.
No.
And if somebody wanted to build on one of these lots, let's say, in a couple of years, they say, okay, I want to use this lot, they would need to. they would need to come back to us to get to subdivide it any further. And because of the rules in, in the town, they have to wait at least 10 years to do that. And even if they did that after the 10 years, we were in a 10 acre zone there. So the most that they could ever do would be with those 10.
One of those lots is, like, I'm right on 240, I'm right on North Mavittsville. That one lot is all wetlands.
This is all, this is.
That's all wetlands.
This is part of this lot, there will never be a separate building.
That's all wetlands.
Yep, they've acknowledged that already.
Yeah, they have.
Just a couple of things. I found the subdivision code section 20.2C. No law created through a minor subdivision approval shall be treated as a minor subdivision again until 10 years after final approval. So that answers that question. And as far as the buildability analysis, I just want to address that because I did raise it in my first initial memo. The town is coming out of the moratorium. We had some initial meeting with the applicant back before they officially applied, where they did kind of show that to us. They showed conceptual buildability and said you could do a house here, you can do a well, there's plenty of room. I just thought the board might want to see that again as part of the record and part of their decision making, but ultimately decided against that, so that's all.
No more questions, just as, as I said, is there a variance in town about where you can put the house in accordance to the, to the road?
Yeah, the RR10 has setback requirements that they would have to apply, apply to. And they've shown that they can.
Close it to the road, not hurt from the road.
Well, they would have to do it within the setback requirements of the RR10. And if they can't, they would have to go to front of the CBA for an area variance. But they've showed us that they could do that here, but in meet setbacks, so.
Anything further in the room or Howard?
Everybody else has finished, I have a CAC time.
Please.
I'd like to wait in for all of you to say whatever they would like to say first.
Go ahead.
Not quite above all the technicality at the moment, I apologize. You have endangered species there and they're regulated by agencies. At what point is the process, I know the subdivision doesn't get stopped because you have endangered species on it. At some point, the regulatory agencies for those species, not with the bog turtle, others will have to be considered when something is being done on that property. Is there something like a notation being put, that you could put in here now? For example, saying that anything in the future would be subject to review of looking for endangered species with this particular property, I'm familiar with that stuff, I've walked my dog there years, the whole time, as probably has endangered species on it, which a good chance it does.
Are you suggesting something that you think would not be part of a future process for any further development?
Well, I'm suggesting, it's up to you. I'm suggesting that a notation be put in the approval that's subject to endangered species analysis for the changes are made on property.
That's.
Part of the approval process at that point.
A little tricky because it's really is triggered by seeker. And a single family house construction as a right doesn't really trigger a seeker. It's not a discretionary action by, by a municipal board.
Take a bog turtle, for example, off the top of my head, I could be wrong again. I, I think it has a habitat range of at least 500 feet. As an endangered species as an example. If you have two separate properties or even one, how does that fit into the protection of that species? Who is going to know what's there, for example? If I'm on property A and I'm 300 feet into the bog turtle range and I'm on property B and I'm 100 feet into the bog turtle range, how is that going to get into the process at some point? And so what I'm suggesting is some sort of a safety valve built into the approval. I'm not sure how to word it. So that these endangered species on that property are somehow protected in the future.
Well, we don't have any confirmed presence because there wasn't any surveys on. We just have the DEC's mapper to go by. Obviously, there's wetlands here, there's a hundred foot requirement for the town that you can't build in.
It would be.
Oh, no, let me, I'll say one more thing. We have Hudsonia here in this, in this county, and they do this type of work. The town has a Hudsonia report, for example, which I have not looked at specifically for this property. But things of that nature exist outside of what we're doing in this room.
Correct, but it's private property and it's, there's no surveys that we have on file right now and there's no planned construction right now. So it's difficult to, to make that kind of requirement on subdivision. You want to add something else?
Yes, I don't think it would be legally enforceable for this board to add a condition to a subdivision related to environmental concerns that the State Environmental Quality Review Act has already considered and made exempt from that review. The state law is there to provide review and analysis of environmental concerns where it has deemed applicable. To burden these properties with that, I think, would not be enforceable.
Yep, anything else, Howard?
I have one more, one last question. And I promise us that. Does, does any, the new, the master plan that the town of Washington is creating, will it impact this land in terms of zoning, in terms of use, commercial?
There's, there's no zoning change happening here. There's no commercial, anything being proposed.
But is there envisioned, would this land, either with new master plan, would there be envisioned this coming effective by the vision?
I, I, I don't know and I don't have any thought.
The new master plan will be looked at in 2025.
Right, so there's, there's no basis on which to project.
Now is looking at possibly adding hospitality.
I do have one more question.
Okay, it's, please, to the point.
Could you please tell me, it says two lot line changes? What changes are proposed for those specific two lots?
I can address that quickly.
Go ahead.
The easiest answer to that question is that there are currently three tax parcels. Two of them are smaller and there's one really large one that makes up bulk of the farm. Each of those smaller tax parcels is going to increase in size significantly, three or four times or more of the size that it currently exists at. So taking a smaller tax parcel, becoming quite large, much more buildable. So no, nothing's getting smaller, nothing's becoming more prohibitive to build on. They're all large, essential building lots.
And where are these two lot lines?
That's, I've got a question. What's, what becomes agriculture, what becomes residential? As far as taxes concerned?
That hasn't been discussed.
It's, it's all zone RR10 now, residential, 10 acres.
How's it change from now to the future? As far as, as the taxes concerned?
Are there ag exemptions on the parcels? And if so, which parcels will continue with the ag exemptions? Is that?
Is that, is your question?
As far as taxes for the.
I don't personally know if there's ag exemptions, I assume there are.
Not, not that it's a matter of concern, but just.
It's going to, they're going to maintain the farm operation as it exists today.
There are ag exemptions.
I'm assuming there would be. We're going to, I've been told by.
It's been a farm for years. It's one of the most beautiful roads in Millbrook.
Sure.
As a farm.
I've been told that they're going to continue, that there's family members that want to continue the farms. That's all I can say about that.
And the tax assessor is responsible for reassessing and looking at these new parcels. We'll make sure that everything's done the right way.
I just want to follow up on that one question about commercial use in RR10 and that area. As Bob Ollie just said, you know, the comprehensive plan review report that was produced by the comprehensive plan review committee, that's, that's for hospitality primarily. And at the last board meeting, we talked about having that document be an appendix to our current comprehensive plan. But we can then use that as a, as a guide for any zoning changes. That is how it is in the work state. The comprehensive plan has provided provision and guide for that. We have a public hearing scheduled for that in December. So I encourage anybody here, everybody here as residents, should read before and understand what those recommendations are and, and, you know, coming December if you want to ask questions or have your comments heard. You don't have any time to talk about just hospitality.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing. If there are no other questions, can I have a motion?
Motion to close.
Second? All in favor, ah, okay. Given all of this, would the board care to move on the resolution?
I would like to.
Yep. Could you present us with the resolution?
Yes, so first, Chair, you would need to adapt parts two and three of the EAF that was prepared by your planner.
Do we have?
There's not much to it, just a bunch of boxes, check no for, because there's nothing applicable here, so.
This requires a vote to adopt the EAF?
To adopt the, to adopt the parts two and three would require.
Motion to adopt sections two and three of the EAF.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Andrew?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
Adopt a negative declaration.
So is there a?
We can do that in one vote, I think.
Yeah, usually I think we do it in one.
Okay, so can I have a motion to, to?
You have to adopt a negative declaration would be the first step.
You can't do them together?
They're separate.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the negative declaration?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Andrew?
Yes, aye.
The next one?
Resolution?
Yes, then that would be a resolution to grant the subdivision as requested. The final map was submitted and is dated October 13th. That was one outstanding issue, but it's been filled in on that sheet. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been provided to the planning board.
Can I have a motion?
No, I don't need to skip over the hot topic. What, what has changed on it since we saw it at the last planning board?
It's not a sketch plan anymore.
We submitted a sketch the last time and now we've submitted the final survey and subdivision, sort of, subdivision with all your.
The standard like engineer style, yeah. With the signature line for the planning board chair, right?
Can we have a motion?
To approve the resolution?
To approve the resolution.
Yes, so moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Andrew? Okay, so we will proceed with this. Thank you very much and thank you all for your questions. I will, I think it's all over. Okay, our next matter is Keela Farms accessory cottage special permit. We have some folks here representing this. Okay, I'm sorry.
I think Kieran is next.
Kieran, yes, Kieran's special permit. Who is representing Kieran? Okay, please introduce yourself.
That'd be great, I think the camera gets it better.
Thank you very much. You leave that here to be signed? That needs to be signed?
I'll have to drop the mylar off.
Yeah.
Okay, proceed.
Good evening, my name is Jason McIntyre. I represent Brian Kieran and at Roundx Property Solutions. This is an application for a special use permit for 3699 Route 44. That's the old stagecoach deli on Route 44 in the intersection there, Little West Road. It's a special use application for an office building, a real estate management office. There are 11 parking spaces, which is more than enough for the use of three per 500 square feet. There is a residence upstairs, but that's not part of this application. This is just for the office on the lower level. We, at the last meeting, we talked about some revisions that had to be made to the site plan. Those have been made. Specifically, it says 11 parking spaces, it says for a maximum of five employees, office use only, and a signature.
Could you show the parking spaces?
Sure. We have one, two.
Right there, is that a legal parking space as it seems to block the egress out of the building?
This one here?
Yes.
This is the egress out of the building here.
But that's an exit right, right in front of the parking lot.
This here? No, the indent, right?
The indent right there is a.
I'm sorry, this is the only.
Keep going, there's a parking spot, right?
The parking spot right here, but this is a, there's a door right there.
Seems an odd spot for a parking spot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that, you could put a parking spot right where the.
I think that's for the residence here. There's a residence upstairs, but the front door is here.
But there's a big door right on the back, backside of that building. And there's a.
Is that a door?
This right here?
Yes.
Is, is the back entrance to the building, but not the back entrance to the office.
But it's an entrance into the building for anybody that's inside the building. It's a, it's an emergency exit, it could be an egress for anybody that's inside that building, it's an exit.
Or the quickest way out to the parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not, it's not in front of the door, the door can open. It's there, I mean.
The question is if there's a large car, truck, whatever parked there, does it instruct people exiting the building?
No.
The other thing, we had a lot of questions at our last meeting.
It's a door right there, double door, I think.
We also had a lot of talk when you came for the workshop the last time, concerns about safety or traffic. It's a bad corner.
Sure.
Cars park in front, but what, what is going to stop anyone from just parking their car in the front of that building like they did when it was a deli and caused a problem? Is there anything there that would?
Nothing that we added. I don't know if we would be able to enforce parking in front of the building if it wasn't somebody in, in the building. You know, the people in the building are going to be a maximum of five employees and they'll park in the back. Somebody parks in the front, that certainly wouldn't, you know, if somebody parked in the front for the, for the residence that's upstairs, that wouldn't apply to the professional office.
I would also like to make a comment on that.
Yeah, please hold off until we open the public hearing.
Okay.
Is it possible to remove that parking spot that's right in front of the door? Do you still then have no parking spots?
No, they need the 11.
They need 11.
What have you indicators the width of that parking spot?
What is?
What's the width? You've identified a space, what is the width of the space? What would you suggest that it would be to accommodate? This is a construction company, they generally drive pickup trucks, I would assume?
No, it's not a construction company, it's a real estate management.
Property management, okay, sorry. What, ah?
So it says, you know, one inch is 20 feet, so this is probably 20 feet.
Usually nine by 18 or nine by 20 is a standard parking space. Yeah, and those are, that's oversized, I mean, it's.
Yeah. I don't necessarily think that this is indicative of the actual space there. If you visit the site, but you're welcome, please, anybody, there's plenty of room here.
I think they're just showing that they, they put a nine by 20 parking spot there to show that it could be accommodated with the standard size of a parking space, but.
That's where the ambulance was parking.
Okay.
Yeah, there's also a set tank here. So under this patio here, you can't park on top of the patio. You can park here, which is a parking spot. And you can park there.
Code that shows like how far a parking spot has to be from a building or an egress point?
I could check.
I'm sure there's some kind of code for that. Building code, could you, can you, Mr. Finley, do you know off the top of your head?
As far as a set distance from a building?
Yeah, like.
All else being equal, there's no distance that would be required to park a vehicle from. There are cases when a set distance would come into play, but that wouldn't apply for this building since it doesn't, as far as I'm aware, have a basement and any collapsing concerns other than vehicle impact concerns, there would be no minimum distance. However, for a path of egress, you would have to have a distance equal to deal with the door left open in front of that space.
Yeah, which there is.
Typically 36 to 80 inches.
Yeah, there's definitely that, that's there. I was, I was there today.
Do you think this is, meets that requirement?
Oh, it definitely meets that, if that's a requirement, it definitely meets that.
Okay.
There was also some indication on the plan of a dumpster that has to be removed or something. What's that about?
Yeah, dumpster to be removed back here.
Why does it continue to say that for months?
Why hasn't it been removed?
Yeah.
It's, is it on your lot line or is it? It's, is it on your lot line or is it on your neighbor's property?
I actually think that might be the neighbor's. I don't think that's ours, or Mr. Kieran's.
The dumpster is, is-
Does not belong to this property?
I don't believe so, no, it's buried under some, you know, high grass and stuff, it looks like it right now, I haven't been there.
Just included because it's part of the survey, and they noticed it when they did the survey.
But it's not part of this property?
Who knows?
According to the application.
Doesn't, I mean, it looks like it's kind of off. I mean, he didn't put it there, I mean, what's the doing? And he doesn't use it.
They're removing it.
So it says to be removed-
But that's the thing, it says to be removed, but it hasn't been removed, which is my concern.
I have no idea what his plans are for removal, I'm sure if it needs to be removed, he'd actually-
I, I think it does need to be removed in order for those parking lots, those, all those parking spots to be usable, because it does seem to kind of be sitting like midway between the neighbor's property and-
I'd just say, I don't know if it's within his authority to remove it, might not be his, might not be on his property, so I'm not sure.
Well, part of it is on his property.
It looks like it from, from the survey, but I'm not sure about the dumpster.
But if you actually go to the site, which I did today, the, the dumpster looks like it's sitting over those parking spaces. And so if 11 parking spaces are required, you can't, you don't have right now 11 usable spaces because the dumpster is sitting over-
Does it, are the spaces smaller than 18 feet?
Are you asking us?
I'm, I'm wondering.
The parking spaces are not drawn, in fact-
No, no, I'm wondering, you said you visited the site with the dumpster there, then it's blocking the spaces, is there, is there less than 18 feet of space?
I don't know, because you don't have the parking spaces laid out over there. It's gravel, some of it's gravel, some of it's grass, some of it's, you can't really tell where those parking spaces are. They're not lined out as parking spaces. It looks like kind of an overgrown field, some of it, and then some of it is broken up asphalt, and some of it is some gravel. It's hard to see exactly where it starts and stops, but certainly if I pulled in there as a customer, I would not identify all that space as a usable parking.
I mean, this is what our, our surveyor surveyed five spots, or however many.
Seven, I believe.
Possible spots, but I'm just saying right now they're not usable spots.
Well, I don't, I don't think they're planning to pave and stripe the lot. I don't think they've talked about that at all. I think they were just going to leave it existing and-
The dumpster-
They're showing that there's room for seven, seven cars in that area.
With the dumpster, with the dumpster in place, or with the dumpster too?
Seems like it's there, yeah.
With the dumpster.
This is not what it, you know, appears to be when you're actually on the site. Also, when I was there to, today, uh, it seemed that the office was up and running.
In what way?
Uh, there was somebody sitting at a desk in there. It appeared that they were working, and yeah, that's what I saw.
Okay.
And so to me, that seems like you're operating a business when you haven't been issued the permit to operate the business.
Was there a complaint to the building inspector?
Well, it just happened right, right before-
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering.
It just happened today, so-
Okay.
Is, is the business operating currently?
It's operating, but not in the building, and somebody might have been in there to clean it, nobody's been in there.
No, this person was sitting at the desk, like, on the phone.
Um, this person you were talking about is, is my wife, and she's pregnant. She's pregnant, so if she sat down, I would imagine it's probably because she had to sit down.
So you're, you're the attorney representing this?
Yes.
And your wife was in the building today?
Yes, she's the employee. Yes.
So there was an employee in there working today?
She was in operating real estate management office, this, she might have been cleaning.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I don't, I don't-
And this is an existing violation, if they're in there operating a business that they don't have a permit for, it's an existing violation. That's why I bring it up.
Appropriately.
I don't see any, I don't think they were operating a real estate management office today. I think maybe they were cleaning it in anticipation of this public hearing.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, concerns?
Is that something we can do, is, um, have the building inspector go and confirm that there is not an existing violation again?
I mean, you can.
How does that work?
They're not going to be there tomorrow, I'm telling you that right now.
Pretty sure they have the inside scoop now, but we don't have more detail. But I would think that the town would strongly recommend that no business be operating there, especially given the concerns and the prior violations and the time that the zoning enforcement team has been out there. So it would be very smart to not do that until the approval is given.
Sure.
If the board would like, I'm sure-
I have, I have another question. There is, is, as I read the application, there's a limit of five employees, is that right?
A maximum of five, yes.
Maximum of five. And in the, in the use of the term employee, do you include any ton 99 workers?
How are you defining employee?
Yeah, I would imagine 1099 workers would apply, yeah.
It would be, okay, so Sarah, when you do the resolution, if we get there, it would, it would, I think adding a parenthetical to clarify that point would be helpful.
Anything else? Okay, uh, I'd like a, go ahead.
Yeah, so we did, as far as matters to, that we had to take care of from the last meeting, there was the referral to the county, which, uh, took place, and they came back with the matter of local concern finding after reviewing this plan. That was the only thing that we, that was outstanding from the last meeting.
And where does it stand now?
Now we're just opening the public hearing.
No, but on this matter?
For the county?
Hasn't been satisfied?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'd like a, a motion then to open the public meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, including Mr. Cornell?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, we opened the meeting to, uh, let's start with folks in the room. Any questions, comments? Go ahead. Please identify yourself again.
Uh, sorry, Thomas Pauling. I live on 247 Ganzro Road, I press that intersection every day, uh, multiple times a day. The parking a car in front of that building is a danger. That would have been taken up with the state, uh, DOT, the police. Well, DOT, uh, you know, state, you know, state DOT. But also the parking in front of dumpsters is usually, I mean, I'm not sure how many parking lots you expect to-
Dumpster's inactive.
If you have a dumpster there, it says like, don't park here.
Yes, if it's an active, if it's, if it's an active dumpster, it's not an active dumpster.
I, I, I frequent it at that deli, like, a lot. Not 11 parking spots there.
Well-
And the park in front is a danger to the community. Kind of go back and forth there, going back and forth work, go back and forth to drop kids off at school. You cannot have a vehicle parked in front of that building.
So we've asked if you would do anything to assure that there be no parking there?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't put a parking space on our site plan.
I know, what we're asking is if you would do something to prohibit parking there. You could do it with a planter, you could do it with signs, you could do something to indicate that you've understood the concern of the board and the community, and make an effort to see that no one parks there. Is that something you're willing to do?
Should we be willing to? I just wonder what we're able to do on the road, because it's right on the road. You know, I, I don't know about putting something on the shoulder, I don't know if we would be able to do that. I understand that there's a little bit of a sidewalk here, but it's a little bit of a sidewalk.
No parking.
No parking, we agree, we didn't, you know, we don't-
Maybe something as simple as yellow lines painted with a no parking, creating a zone where people-
I agree, but this is, this is the county, I don't know if we're able to do that.
Can't even do that.
Right, the right of way is, yeah.
You would have to go through the Department of Transportation, I think, and make that request. But in the interest of public safety, that could be a very feasible thing to do, to have it so that that area, um, is blockaded with lines on the road. But that would be-
Okay. Thank you. Other? Please.
Um, I'm getting concerned with the parking, I did watch it today as well. And those seven spots, um, is gravelled area, not the whole property on there. It's, it's definitely not seven spots.
No.
And our code, it also says, defining the parking space is a 10 by 20 foot, um, amount. So that would be technically five, maybe parking spots in that spot. And, um, it also has in our code in 4857C, that, um, all parking areas should have a setback minimum of 20 feet from all boundaries. And it doesn't need that, and there is no approval from the previous partner when the deli was there for that, or the patio. So it's never been approved to have any parking back there. So setback should be blocked.
Well, when, something must have been approved at the time, the deli was-
Site plan that we used, that was modified.
There's, there's nothing in town of Washington records.
Of the patio or those parking spaces, because they're not setback from the property lawn?
It seemed to me that Ed remembered something about that plan, so I thought it was before then, previous ones.
It was.
It was.
According to- No, there was a previous planning board involvement for the Stagecoach, predates my involvement here, but-
I'd just like to say with the parking spaces, this was surveyed, a, a surveyor who measured presumably, I'm not sure how a surveyor works, I'll be honest, but presumably he measured because it has 84.16 feet. And that could be, you know, divided by the-
Right, that's, I think that's what he did, he just, he took the code requirement for parking spaces and they set up the survey dimensions and came up with the spaces.
Yeah.
But those spaces are sort of hypothetical, uh, if the land is not created so that people can actually park there, right? It's overgrown, there's grass, there's, I'm not sure that it's set up so that actually park, that many cars could park there. So I think that should be done, otherwise it's not really complying with the number of spaces per building.
Are you suggesting we draw spaces?
No.
Says you create spaces.
Just level the land, get rid of the, the grass growing, and make it an actual parking area.
I think the draft of the resolution has the condition of having 11 parking spaces. I don't know, we can be more specific about how that's defined, but it's going to, there's going to be language in the resolution about maximum of five employees and 11 parking spaces, so.
And then another thing, just a local concern is where the, that spot is, if, if the 11th spot is allowed in front of the door, then that should be the next spot. Because that handicap is down a hill, it's not usable.
Yeah, I think that does need to be changed, the closest parking lot space to the building should be the handicap.
Does the handicap spot matter if it's a private, it's not pub, it's not going to be opened in public? There's no handicapped employees?
Right now, it doesn't, it's, it's still a requirement, it's not based on who you're currently in.
Although the ADA would be required.
But that's on the, also on the North Matasville roadside. Does there a parking lot, a parking spot on the North Matasville roadside? Cause so many parks are pretty much-
Of the shoulder?
On the side of the building?
Yeah.
There's no parking, there's no parking.
There shouldn't be any parking there, but, yeah. That's probably leftover from the deli, somebody running to get coffee.
Is somebody still parking there? I guess you could always call-
For people-
In law enforcement. It, it is really a dangerous intersection if people are parking at the intersection.
Yep. And then just one other thing, is that there is a patio sign that's, for some unknown reason, hanging in front of the building. That is never a legal sign, that should probably be there.
What does the sign say? It says patio.
It's up in that patio and an arrow to the back, which is never approved.
From the deli.
And it hangs out.
He has plans to make the building very nice, we started with planters, uh, but we had to discontinue use. I mean, we know, we're, we had plans to remove the sign and that whole, I mean-
How many spaces do you need?
Well, you need three per 500 square feet.
They need 11.
11 spaces.
They need 11.
11.
Yeah. Yes.
It's total for the residential use also, it's total for the site, it's a mixed-use site.
Because when you took away the deli, they had, um, the oil, um, tanks on the side, so you couldn't park there. So there was dumpsters here and oil tanks here for the discharge.
I'm, I'm not sure.
You know, so you had extra parking spaces. Now, now it's not a deli, you have an extra parking space right out the back door.
This way?
Yeah.
Yeah, so here was, um, the, the big tanks for oil.
Will we specify on there that the handicap spot is the one that's closest to the building?
You said it was 20 feet, well, you think it's something like 20 feet wide, so it certainly seems like there would be enough space there.
I, I don't know that you can specify that it's closest to the building, because for handicap compliance, you have to have area for the person to disembark from the vehicle, and there's specific widths for that to occur. So that may be the only spot where a vehicle could back in, but they would still have accessibility. I do want to point out, and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but under 313-63, it does indicate that the planning board may reduce the number of off-street parking spaces required if the applicant can make other arrangements, or can, if the applicant can otherwise show that the parking standards are excessive for the particular use proposed. So while that would require reconsideration of the parking, if you're dealing with five employees and one, a single residence, I think, right above it, that could be something you could consider. It, it seems as though it's too tight in the back. But I think what the board has expressed is that more measurement, perhaps more detail would be beneficial, but I will defer to your expertise.
Well, it does say, I guess, it was difficult to see that, but it's 84 feet on that side, and you have seven, is it seven or seven? And they have to be 10 feet wide, so that's 70 feet with an extra 14 feet on the side there. I mean, feasibly, you could put that in there, but just when you're on the site, um, it just doesn't seem doable, just because of the grass and all, and-
To address your concern. To, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to catch up. It looks like there's setback, you know, 20 feet, wherever it is, on the property line.
Like Nicole said, when you're on the property, it doesn't look like that. It's about 54 feet, it's acceptable, yeah, it's usable.
Have you been there recently?
I haven't examined the spots.
You have not, okay.
The potential is there, obviously, the, the land supports it, there's a good 70 feet within the 84 feet where you could park. I'm just saying, the way the site is now with the dumpster in there and the overgrown grass, you could not put seven cars in that space right now. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know if that means that, that's not-
Yeah.
If it's just the potential has to be there, then the potential is there, because this space measures 84 feet.
I think they're showing, sorry, I think they're showing the potential, but maybe they're holding off on improving the site until they're back, legally back, allowed to be there.
But the requirement is to have the spots, not the potential for the spots, am I missing something?
Well, I mean, if it's overgrown, I think there wouldn't economically be a motivation to clear the spot and do everything until they do get the approval. Chicken and the egg situation, so, I mean, maybe if they do it beforehand, but-
Okay.
Can we put that in, into the approval, is that, that the land, that it has to be, that cars could be parked in there, not just the potential, but there has to be usable space? Like a dumpster can't be in a parking space and they count it as a parking space? If the grass is as high as my car, I'm not going to, you can't park a car in there.
I, I don't want to confuse the board, it does say in the resolution, if you were to adopt it, and in the plan, that, um, 11 parking spaces will be required. So if that is what is approved, then they will have to, if they don't, then it would be a violation.
And Mr. Finley could go back and verify.
Okay.
Right. I'd also like to be clear on this dumpster, you're presenting us with something here that says to be removed. Are you telling us that will be removed?
Will be removed.
Okay.
My only question was, if, if my only concern is-
Hold on.
It will be removed. If we're able to remove it, I'm not sure whose it is. It might not belong to Mr. Bryant.
It was the Jellies, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, but Mr. Kieran doesn't own the deli.
No, that's it.
But he owns the property that the deli was on.
But are, you've presented us with this document, your document says this is to be removed, who made that? Who suggests, who's proposing that it'll be removed?
I suppose the surveyor, but I suppose he probably had input, input from Brian. I would imagine that Brian, if he needed to remove it, if he's able to remove it, he'll, will remove it. And if it looks like that it's on his property, then he'll be able to remove it. I just, it's not my job.
Well, it's clearly on both properties, that the surveyor has told us that half of it is on the other person's property and half is on there, on yours. But that doesn't mean it can't be removed. mean it can't be removed. If it, you know, he needs to find out about that.
Yeah, we can definitely find out about removing the dumpster and if we can remove it, we will remove it. And if we can't remove it, we'll find a way to remove it.
Go ahead.
I just reiterate that our only concern is the intersection and the safety.
We've addressed that and we're told, but the limit, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, as far, as far as the, I mean, kind of alternative for a dumpster, you don't need a dumpster, just get a trash can.
Yeah, but the dumpster's not in use.
Okay.
That's every, every residential transaction, you have to figure out who's trash can is.
I think it's been addressed.
Impatiently waiting, I'd like to make my statement about the, the safety issue on that intersection.
Please, please identify yourself.
I would like to be heard.
Please identify yourself.
It's Adrian Popco, two fifty-five North Mavittsville Road. I have lived here for over forty years and I have gone through four businesses at that intersection. When Carnes Market was there, he simply told people, you are not allowed to park here. He would refuse to wait on them and allow them through the door if they parked in the front, so that it got to the point where no one parked there, we didn't have a single accident. After that, when the deli, especially when the deli moved in there, the parking started, the owners refused to, to speak to customers about it and we started having accident after accident because you cannot, when you're on North Mavittsville, trying to pull out in any direction, if a car is parked in front of that space, you cannot see oncoming traffic. And I have attempted to get a traffic light put up, I have attempted to get a four-way stop sign put up. I was told it would be too much trouble to do that and that they, no one was willing to do it. And it was getting to the point where we were gonna put a neighborhood petition up to get at least a four-way stop sign when the deli ceased to exist. So if that is what is necessary to address this situation and, you know, make it a safe intersection, I would be glad to do that. I just need to know that somebody's not gonna die in that corner because people are frustrated and don't wanna be bothered or don't want to tell customers they can't park there. It's not worth somebody's life.
Can.
It's bad enough without any business there.
Can the applicant elaborate on the nature of the business here? Will there be a need for people to stop on the street and run in for anything? Is it that kind of business?
No, this is a real estate management office, there will most likely be one or two people in there at any given time. It's not open to the general public, there may be some people dropping off their rent money, but if, if there's a concern about parking on the front or the side of the building, we'll absolutely do what we can to prohibit people from parking there. Cause I agree, dangerous it is.
I mean, couldn't you simply just put some type of barrier there, a tasteful barrier? I mean, they do that all over the country and cities, so you could just put big planters or something there and where a car, a car couldn't access it.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. We would love to put some sort of planter, make it beautiful, but it's on the road. It's on the, this is a county road and this is a, assume a town road and, you know, our space only applies to this black line here. You know, as far as people parking, we can tell them, don't, but I don't know if we physically, without permission from somebody else, can put something in the road there.
Well, we hope you'll pursue it.
Yeah.
You, you're on record telling us of your concern, your awareness of the problem, your commitment to trying to alleviate the problem, so I'm sure you're aware of your potential exposure on it, counselor.
Perhaps you could contact the Department of Transportation, but that's also a conversation we could have with your town board. I know Leslie's here and perhaps with Jeff Bedissoni, a communication to the Department of Transportation about that area, cause it does seem, I mean, it came up at the last meeting too, so it is a concern.
Yeah.
That we could look into that request on behalf of the town.
I was gonna ask you a question, I'm sure that there are certain, I don't know if there, it's a county road, you know, there are certain regulations around.
Yeah.
Access to those roads and if that driveway doesn't fulfill that requirement, you know, that would be something that, cause it is a very, living up the road from there, there are quite a few accidents at that intersection and coming out is really blind, it's a blind spot there, so that would be worth us discussing.
Okay.
Bob Audio, thirty-seven oh seven forty-four. The, the corner is a dangerous corner, operated by our family did for sixty-nine years. So basically, we've gone to the state several times over the years and asked for a traffic light or a yellow blinking light to be put up there. And when we requested it, they come, they put the little rubber things across the road that count the traffic and there's plenty of traffic on Route forty-four, but not enough traffic on Little Rest Road and North Mavittsville Road. And don't poke me on this, but I think the last time it was done was about ten years ago. I was just thinking about those times. A little building on the corner where it is, sort of, I think it's a great use myself personally for the building. It'll limit how much traffic that can be in the, you know, he's got other parking spaces or whatever, but when I was growing up, there was gas pumps in front of that building and people would stop in the road if you get gas in the fifth, believe it or not, I have pictures of it. It was a general store, it was a butcher market, it was many things.
Remember that.
So I think it's a great use of the building. A lot of money was invested in the building, I believe, when the last deli was there, they put a, you know, fancy septic system into the code. And the parking in the front is, is definitely a hazard. I think a very small stanchion that people could see over so it doesn't block traffic that says no parking is all that's needed there. It's just a small, low lining little thing, it would be on your property, I'm sure, maybe in the state right away. I don't think the state's gonna stop there and make you take it away if it doesn't block you. I think that's a simple solution for that, but I think it's a great use of the property as an, as an office, a management company, thinking of all the other types of things that's been in there over the years.
Good, good point, thank you very much. Any other comments on Zoom or in the room? Is there someone on Zoom has another comment? Okay. I will then take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Aaron, where do you think we are here?
So we have a resolution prepared for.
Special permit, right.
Any concerns at this point outstanding?
That would be it, I would wonder if there are still concerns that are outstanding.
Just as I stated before, is that the size of the property, the parcel does support those seven, the size of seven parking spaces at ten feet wide, just when you go there, those spaces, you couldn't park seven cars there right now. There's a dumpster in the space and there's grass and it's just not, they're not usable right now. And so I guess if we approved it, I would like to see an inspection or some compliance that those spaces are actually available for parking, if that's what's required, eleven.
We've closed the public hearing. We have your representation that you will see that there are usable parking spaces there and the dumpster will be removed. Is that correct?
Yes, there's some way that you would like me to confirm that.
I think we should put that in the resolution.
Yes.
So it is included that there will be eleven spaces so that.
Okay, so, so our, just so you're clear, our understanding is that there are eleven spaces, not the representation of the possibility of eleven spaces and that if we do come to inspect, it'll be that there are eleven operating parkable spaces. Just wanna be very, very clear, there's been a lot of confusion on this application.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're being very clear, that's all.
Anything we can do to clear it up? We need to go and park eleven cars in there and have somebody and.
I think it's a reasonable expectation that there's spots that cars can park in, I think you all know what we're saying.
Yeah.
Anything else? Andrew?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, so.
And that would include the clarification on that the council member, council board member, sorry, I get my boards confused, the board member recommended for the ten ninety-nine employees, so the maximum of five includes.
Yes.
Ninety-nine employees.
Yes. And you've heard the concerns of the board and of the community regarding the safety of cars not parking in front there and we hope that you will make every effort to just common sense way, see that cars aren't parked there.
Yeah, we'll put a.
Okay. Okay, so we have a resolution to approve the special use permit for Adirondack Property Solutions, three sixty, three six nine nine Route forty-four. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so this carries.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Keela Farms. Someone here representing Keela Farms.
Good evening, my name is Joe Zarecki. Keela Farm for a special use and a site plan approval for cottage.
Is this your property?
No, it's not. No, we should move it. The owner plans on constructing the cottage on the property, because the existing house, and this is on twenty acres, is planned to be raised and build a new house and it saves footprint. And we addressed the comments of the planner and I think we had county referral and we, we had fire department, that was recommended and if you send it to.
Yep.
I don't think I have anything more to add to that, cause you said to keep it short.
Well, I appreciate some, appreciate someone's paying attention.
Yeah.
Aaron, we heard from the fire department.
Yeah, we heard from the fire department, they have no concerns, we had a letter from them. County referral was a matter of local concern. A lot of my comments were addressed prior to the discussion at the last meeting. He came in with revised application materials and more information to clear up some questions I had. So I recommended that we set the public hearing for tonight and move on from that.
Anything else? Jim, Andrew, you have any comments or questions?
No.
Susan?
No.
Okay, then I would like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is not open, sir? No, not on this one? No, just kidding. Any comments, questions from anyone in the room, from anyone on Zoom? Having heard none, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Really? Okay. Do we have a resolution? You should've gone first. Okay, we have a resolution to approve special use permit, site plan, Keela Farms, five ninety feet Burbank Road. There's a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, carried unanimously, regulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck with this, to give them our best. Okay, we now have a couple of workshops, DLC Education and Research Center, anyone here from the DLC? So you're, wanna put up a strip mall? Is that your?
On the purpose.
That your idea?
Get people on Zoom. We'll be getting.
Hi, good evening, board, my name is Kyle Bartle, engineer, I'm from LaBella Associates. I'm here on behalf of Nick from App Clinic, Duchess Lane Conservancy. I'm represented with Rebecca Seaman from Duchess Lane Conservancy as well. So this project's a pretty simple change in use. Duchess Lane Conservancy acquired a twenty-six acre parcel that was recently from the town of Washington for a lot line adjustment. Just now has the twenty-six acres into the Duchess Lane Conservancy and they are looking to do a change in use in turning this current existing six bedroom home into a new research and education facility. We're really trying to keep the project as simple as possible with the least amount of disturbance. There are wetlands on site, however, we are staying out of the hundred foot buffer away from the town code. We're making small improvements for parking requirements for the site. There are going to be thirteen staff and twenty educational seats, so we have proposed eighteen parking spaces. Listening to the other presentations tonight, we do have a handicap spot with van accessible loading there for a handicap person to have ADA access into the place. We received a very thorough letter from Erin at ACR giving the board some items that they might want to look into or ask questions tonight. Again, we are here seeking special use permit and site plan approval for this change in use. At this time, I was gonna open up to the board to see if they had any specific questions based on the memo and see if I can answer it the best of my ability. We are hoping to have a public hearing set for the next meeting on December sixth. At that time, maybe we can hash out any of the remaining comments for that meeting and maybe have a resolution prepared for that meeting. At this time, I wanted to open up to any of the board members to see if they had any comments or questions particularly related to the memo letter prepared by ACR.
The main thing, it seemed to me is that the gravel parking lot was going to go in to ride those parking spaces. And then, could you describe to us what other improvements are being made to make it into an educational facility?
Sure, so that's a, it's a very good point. So we are proposing parking, gravel parking for additional educational seats inside. Obviously, we're having an ADA accessible parking space and so there will be some minor improvements to make the ADA bathroom inside of the premise and just to conform to any ADA individuals.
And in the, I read that the new parking area is screened from the road.
That's correct, yeah, so there's a, you can see on here, this is a hundred foot setback from the road here, this is that dash line.
Okay.
And our parking, if you picture, is at least two hundred feet from the road. So there's substantial amount of screening that you would see, you know, between the road and that gravel parking area.
Tracing things.
Exactly.
Are you expecting to do any signage or lighting or, or new buildings for like a conference center or anything like that?
So there is no proposed structures as part of this job, it's only point two nine acres of disturbance. We are proposing one sign to basically just direct traffic around this existing driveway, so there's one-way traffic.
So there'll be no sign out at three forty-three?
So one thing I failed to mention in the, this original site plan is the relocation of the Duchess Lane Conservancy sign towards the front of the property. However, this will meet all of the town standards and codes as it relates to setbacks and requirements for site signage.
Can you, when you come back, can you have a picture of that sign and?
Sure.
Give us.
Sure, no, it's, it's a good point and let me possibly answer this, there's the existing sign that's.
It's the existing sign that's already at the DLC offices. I, I know it's there and I know I've driven by it a thousand times, but right now, I can't remember what it looks like.
It's a small sign and you can even send a picture of it.
Yeah, that would be great in the sun and sides.
People might ask for that in the public hearing, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good point.
And will that sign be lit? I can't remember if the one over is now, I can't remember that it is.
It's not lit, okay.
Right, so actually, you know, there was a good comment from, in the memo and I actually did look into the town code today and we measured the sign to make sure it would meet all of the town code requirements.
And what about lighting? What's happening with lighting?
Sure, so obviously, there's existing lighting on that, on the house right now that would kind of serve the front of this. We are proposing four pedestrian lights that we put in our plan set, they're dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
I figured just to give a little bit of lighting for the people parking in the gravel lot.
Okay.
Do you have any, hang on, one second, have, do you have any sense of what could be the greatest number of people on the premises or the greatest number of cars? If there were, you're planning any kinds of events or activities that would draw more people in?
Sure, so the plan is to propose parking to meet, obviously, the town code, which would be four spots for every educational seat and one for each staff member. So right now, there's thirteen staff members and twenty educational seats, which comes out to eighteen parking spaces.
How does that work, though? If you have a class that you're giving and you, 20 people are coming to attend the class, you're going to get 20 cars and no.
Or possibly more.
The way that I understand.
Staff will maybe be there.
What's the maximum number of people that you would see participating in an event at a single, at one time?
So I think if I can speak to that.
Please.
For history or the DLC, if you think about where our location is now, and that parking is much smaller than what's proposed here, the events we've had in the past, and we hope to continue to have, our events for planning board members, town board members, we usually, our average, which is what we figured in order to make this application, is about 20 people. And usually, when we hold those events, we may have a speaker, we may have someone else, staff is usually not there, whether I am morning events, evening events, so we oftentimes don't have the overlap of staff parking. If you've ever seen the DLC, as I said, the parking lot is much smaller, it's probably maybe 10 or 12, Becky Thornton is actually on Zoom as well, she can be here tonight, but the staff, if they're ever there for board meetings, which is the one time we have 28 board members, if they're ever all in attendance, the staff will actually park out along the road in order to provide parking for the board members. In this area, and we're not counting them as parking, but if the board members visit the site, there's also quite a bit of parking around that circular drive, it's a double wide circular drive, and there's also parking in front of what used to be the garage, so we could show that as overflow parking, but considering what we've had in the past, our much larger events, at the moment, we don't proceed having those there, oftentimes, there are events that are offsite. So for our events onsite, the parking would be adequate.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sure, should I go over some of the stuff in the memo that might not have been covered?
Okay.
A lot of it was. Let's see, so there was mentioned in the application about DLC taking steps to protect the house with a conservation easement, is that in place yet, is there working on that, is there any particular details you can provide?
Yes, so we will be providing a copy of the conservation easement for this.
Yeah, I know that DLC's business is doing those, I'm sure.
It was already aligned as well, and it was already filed, we took steps with this as we acquired the property to make sure the house was not protected. Sometimes we protect structures, oftentimes we do not, our primary business is protecting land, but in this case, with that iconic house, we took steps in a new conservation easement as we did the lot line adjustment to also protect the structural integrity of the house. So it's an historic house, and you'd hope that was important.
So it'll run with the property and DLC somehow, you know, sells it in the future? If someone wants to do any alterations to the house, they would have to, it would be subject to consent from DLC?
It would be subject to these.
Yeah.
And would that easement be available by the time the public hearing happens, last day on December 6th?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to see that.
And just email it and have it sent to the board.
So I also had a comment in there number three about, and this really isn't the planning board's responsibility, but they, you know, they did mention that they're committed to having a pilot for a period of 10 years, payment in lieu of taxes, which in speaking with Sarah and Leslie, it might make sense to have that negotiated with the town board and in a good position before the planning board makes any, takes any action on this?
I think we, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait.
I don't understand what that.
And it's been approved by our board to keep the taxes at the same level as they are now, and not try to reduce them for at least 10 years, subject to, because obviously, the town and the DLC may have different financial needs after 10 years. So I think what we would propose is acceptance by the town board of that part of the program.
So that letter was submitted to Kristin, and she speculated that to, I don't know if you speculated to the entire planning board, but I said it to the town board, meant to counsel, so we did just touch base on that with the board and our next town board. But I think the planning board, and Sarah, currently if I'm wrong, the planning board, you know, you could have something, I guess we would address that during every assembly meeting, about whatever that negotiation turned to town and DLC, because Jeff was of the opinion that it's, the town board would be the right body to be finalizing this, for this sort of conversations for taxes. And we do have, we do have it in writing from the DLC, and that letter will.
Yes, it was my understanding that Jeff's determination was that the pilot discussions shouldn't precede any final action, final approval by the planning board, but that it shouldn't hinder me from continuing with the public hearing. And I'll just make sure we speak to him or you as well.
Right, and it's on my agenda to cover at our town board meeting and any of the town board might have on there for you as well.
I just want to make for the record, though, I don't, my understanding is DLC is under no obligation to provide this benefit to the town in terms of taxes, also, also to protect the house and preserve it. So my understanding is that DLC is doing this as sort of an expression of not only being outstanding part of the community and neighbor, and that there's, I don't think we should condition anything on their generosity. I completely agree, thanks, Jim. Anything?
I think many of these questions are just in preparation for the public hearing next month, and just if we can make things as tight as possible and get as many questions hammered out and things just lined up so that when the public hearing comes about, we'll have all the answers that may be requested from the public.
Sure. Couple more things, so the code does require erosion sediment control, you know, when you're disturbing topsoil, you've shown silt fence, you've shown reseating plans for the area where you're going to make the gravel parking lot. I posed a question to the board if that's acceptable for purposes of erosion sediment control, you can approve that as part of approving the special permit, or if you want to see more. Personally, I don't think you do, so just making that note.
Erin, I can speak to that a little bit.
Sure, go ahead.
So sometimes on our larger plans, we'll have a plan that's specifically dedicated to erosion sediment control. For this particular project, as it's not the most complex, we're able to fit the erosion control notes and practices on this sheet with details on another corresponding sheet. We felt like it would probably be a little bit excess to create a whole new plan sheet just for those erosion controls that we're able to show, so that's kind of why we went that process.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. We talked about lighting and signage, so I guess you'll show us a picture of the sign for the next meeting. And then as far as parking, I think, you know, I raised the issue, like I, I don't see a definition in the code about what an adult student seat is, and I did question that one space for four. But if you're saying that you're, it's going to be pretty much consistent with what you've got going on at your existing facility, and that you have room for overflow, that could be enough to satisfy the board here. You might want to maybe show on the plan potential overflow spots, if, you know, not like, I don't think you need to like show a parking space, but maybe just call it out, potential overflow parking area, something like that, if it helps. There are two referrals we have to do for this one, we do have to go to the county for GML 239M, so we could do that, you could authorize Kristin to do that tonight with this plan, which I think is fine to see, for the county to look at. It does also require the EAF for this, it is an unlisted action, so it was a short EAF. I reviewed that and I don't have any comments. It is within the Village Millbrook watershed protection zone, so again, it has to get filed with the state and the village of Millbrook, which Kristin can handle between meetings. Seeker, I discovered, it's unlisted, you raised the issue of traffic, we're asking about maximum attendees, that's one area where you could ask for more information, it sounds like we're not too concerned about that. We'll see what happens at the public hearing, but it's, great, go ahead.
Anything else?
Can I, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So as it relates to Dutch County Planning, they have, I think it's 30 days to respond, so if we, if I could just ask that we get that out maybe in the next couple of days, so that 30 days is before the next assembly meeting.
And they've asked for it before, the 30 days, because it's such a tight thing for us.
Yeah, we've gotten into that a few times.
And they've always gotten it back to us, so.
I just wanted to mention it.
Okay.
And what I understood, based on Mr. Cornell's comments, was that it seems like the planning board might decide to make an action on this without a town board discussion on the pilot, is that correct?
So.
I don't think that would hinder us, but it would be helpful if that could be, you know, negotiated as down to as much or worked out, will that be, will you guys meet before December 6th? We're meeting next week, and we have been writing the DLCs in town, I don't think this is going to be the, I think it's something that the board needs to discuss, and we'll do it next week, and I don't have a vision of any issues, but I, you know, I think we need to reserve that right, and I can't speak on behalf of the board, so.
Fair enough.
And yeah, we'll make sure to get, there's a couple of things that are included on the application, we just need to get a list of some of the adjoining farm parcels, we'll give a picture of the sign, we'll try to get that ASAP over to you guys, so if there's any comments from here.
That pedestrian lighting that you described, sometimes we have public hearings, that is something that people want to know more about is lighting, especially in this rural community where people value, you know, I don't know if the DLC is going to come in there and do something that would not be in line with the values of the community, but it might just be nice if you had some kind of picture or some more description of the lighting, if it would be a question that you might be asked.
Sorry to interrupt. And also maybe some detail as to are the lights going to be shining all night, are they going off at a certain time?
I can speak to that, those would only be on when we have a dance, just like the DLC now, if you've ever noticed, it's dark, so no one's there, so you're very aware of light pollution.
The plan does have a detail on the, on the details sheet of the light pole. They didn't provide like an analysis of like, you know, the foot candles, but it's only four light posts, and they're setback pretty far from the road, you're going to have the trees and forested area between.
And the dark sky.
Yeah, according to.
They're already on during operations.
Correct.
Something, of course, in lower temperature, we've had this in other places in Kelvin, something like 25 or 2, something in that range, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure, so this is actually a 2700 Kelvin, so it's pretty low on the spectrum, it's a warm white color that we're proposing for the seven, I think would fit probably well into it.
And don't you block apples so that it doesn't spread out from the neighbor's property and so on?
Correct, it's dark sky.
That's tough, though, I'm very glad to hear you say the dark skies.
And it's 200 feet back from the property line, so it shouldn't.
But you can see when we did the, I was going to say Ruby Chevrolet, when we did the Ruby Chevrolet thing, the neighbors were concerned about light flare and so on, even though, you know, lower temperature, but it's still, you can see lights, we have the wire ways. So thoughts on that and your, your design?
Sure, so what I can do is I can take a very fine look into the light fixtures I was proposing, kind of look at some examples, and see if we would have to do something to kind of tilt the light down. I don't see that being an issue.
Down with lighting, low Kelvin, dark sky.
Yeah, I don't think we can make it any warmer than 2700, I think that's probably.
Well, 27 is reasonable, 25 is a little better, but all right. But the DLC is a nine to five operation.
Yeah.
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 Definitely.
Anything else, anything else from you, anything else? Okay, we'll move on, and Jim, I think you said it well in terms of how much we value your presence in the community and all you've done, so thank you very much.
It's very lucky for the community that DLC has.
Yes.
So will we schedule a public hearing then? Do we need a vote on that, or can we just schedule it?
Uh-uh, we need a motion for.
Yeah, okay, so can we have a motion to schedule a public hearing on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That would be December 6th.
December 6th.
The next meeting is at 6 o'clock rather than 6:30.
Yeah, I thought this one was at 6.
Time has changed, yeah.
Couple months, man.
We're moving on, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Upton Lake High School Site Plan, let me guess.
Wasn't you?
You're planning board fans, right?
My name is Brian Bovey, I'm representing Upton Lake.
Thank you.
A little hard hearing from the last, if I just speak up, try to hear everything.
Okay.
Want to put your map on the table till you can.
That'd be great.
I had gotten a, an email from Erin, you know, there was a number of things that were either missing or in question.
Thanks.
My initial plan was to present something just to get, get an idea that you guys are liking where we're looking for that building and what we're looking to do, but I wanted to quickly be able to add and present some extra information to the board regarding layout, regarding site plan, regarding parking, all that stuff, so I did make eight copies, if you guys want to have that.
Right.
And it also, there was a couple of building specifications that was also in question, I wanted to add that to it as well, so I've got eight copies for you, if you guys feel hungry.
Could you, before we get to the maps, could you just give us a sense of the plan here? What's the idea?
Okay, so what we're doing.
If you don't mind, we want to.
Thanks.
I'd like to know what's existing and what's happening.
Yeah.
Currently on the property, there is Upton Lake Christian School, they are partnering also on the property with E3 Church. If I stand back here, will you be able to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I did was I outlined and read all the properties that the church owns. So right now, we currently have the school. Currently on the property, there is this building right here, which houses the elementary school, houses the gym, and then two years ago, we had built on a sanctuary on this front section here. There's also a high school which is operating in this building right here, and then there is the pastor's house that's operating in the back. What they're looking to do, the building where they're currently using for the high school is an old ageic building, and currently, I believe, they have 31 enrolled high school students there. Building is not serving their needs for all the purposes, it's a regular school where they're doing English, math, and science, and art, and history, but to be able to do everything well, they need more space. What they're looking to do also is have it be so that whenever the high schoolers are looking to use the gym, they don't have to walk outside, walk along, right now, it's not even a sidewalk from the building to the gymnasium, so they're looking to be able to do something where we're adding on a new building, which is just for the high school to be attached to the existing building. So now, they can come and go to the gym, and being that it's a Christian school, but also, they hold, I think on Tuesdays, services in the sanctuary as well. I do not know, I'm sure one of the questions is going to be, what's going to happen to the existing high school building, and to be honest with you, I do not have an answer for it, and I don't think that the elders that are making decisions know what they want to do with the building. There's a hearsay that says that two options, one is take the building down because there's so much work that needs to be done to the building, it may not be worth renovating it. Did hear one of the elders say that, well, gee, you know, they would love to see a building of use for woodworking and teach them some electrics and other possible building type, you know, trades for that, but I really don't have an answer for that one. But my focus is really to look at potentially adding on a 14,000 square foot building, which is, you know, two stories, so roughly 7,000 square feet per floor. When looking over the entire property, if I can, I have to just hold this one up for the next page. When they came to me to help them to, as far as design and plan for the building, they gave me the stipulations that they wanted to be able to have something that is attached to the existing building. If it was to be anywhere else on the property, there's some 47 acres, there's plenty of area to be able to move about, but because they're looking for us to attach, we're kind of limited in location. In this area right here, once you were, my very, we have an existing septic system that takes care of the existing building and sanctuary. Over here where this house is, where they're housing the high school, they have an existing septic system that's here. We have an existing parking lot that's here, and by the way, one of the things when we did talk about the parking lot, I designed it in such a way to show that there's a natural traffic flow coming in and out of the property for buses, cars, without inflicting or causing any kind of traffic flow problem. coming in and out of the property for buses, cars, without inflicting or, or causing any kind of traffic flow problems for all the parking areas. Over here, what I've got presented is the potential area for your septic system, new septic system and expansion drills. In the back here where you can see the towco lines are really nice and tight, we happen to have a hill or a mountain, I'd say mountain. It's a pretty sizable hill that's coming off the back of it. But really, to be able to put it directly in the back of, of the existing building would pose a difficulty. It's not, I, at this point, we haven't done any real testings, but I'm assuming that it's not real good diggable dirt. I'm assuming it's primarily rock in that area. We would still want to excavate the area. What I would like to be able to do is have an access road to be able to come around the back of the property. Right now, currently, they don't really have a real designed access road in the back. Right now, the, in the back of the building, there is a propane tank which is providing fuel source for one of the heating systems for the building. They also have an oil tank on the other side, which is providing another fuel source for the building. What I'm proposing within this whole property is to be able to have it that we have a natural flow of the road system where we can either run or rail the septic system and come into the back. Works greatly for, for a couple of purposes, not only for, for service vehicles, but for fire, for emergency, as well as fuel. And if there's any deliveries or whatever, we have a nice little spot for that as well. Right now, we're not increasing parking spots. What, what I've figured out was, let me first borrow this. Right now, the, the building currently houses an elementary school, which is not looking to expand. And they have 36 kids for their enrollment, and they currently have 10 people on their faculty. Currently for the high school, there's 31 people enroll. I asked them specifically if they had an idea of what they're thinking the increase in enrollment would be. And nobody, to be honest with you, could give me a straight answer. But if I did a little deduction in, I'll show you on another plan. According to the design I did with the building, if I take six rooms, which is what we have, six classrooms, English, math, art, music, science, and put 15 chairs in each one, that gives me 90 potential students, which would be triple their potential enrollment. And if I, if I look at the, look at the past 25 or 30 years of Upton Lake Christian School, I don't believe their enrollment was ever more than 30 or 40 people. If, with something like this, I think, you know, this more than covers the, the ability of them to be able to expand and still carry the capacity of, you know, to do all the parking. Based on all my numbers and calculations, adding students and then figuring a same thing of one parking spot per four students, I see that we need a total of 54 total parking spots if I were including the existing elementary school facilities, faculty, as well as the new high school. And when talking to the principal today, she's thinking, well, we're going to figure maybe like 60 to 75. But what I'm doing is, let's, let's shoot and figure for just in case there happens to be, you know, more than what they're thinking, let's plan for the worst rather than be sure on that. That's, that's kind of the general overall plan. Right now, I've got the building designed with a flat roof, dotted, and I know that the existing zoning says 35 feet. If we keep the two story, which is where we're going to main two stories, with a flat roof on there, we fall well below that around 27, 28 feet, depending on the amount of height coming out of the ground for pitch for septics and whatnot. What I'd like to be able to do is break to your attention the idea of maybe potentially building a peaked roof onto it. The preference there is with the existing buildings that have been flat roofs, rubber roofs, EPDMs, all that type of roof systems tend to be problematic over the years. And we find that there's a lot of patching and repatching and repairing. Whereas if we take and go and put a peaked roof on it, we can pretty much get a lifetime warranty on the roof. What that does though is that puts us over the 35 foot limit. And my guess would be we're probably going to be around 40 to 42 feet if we go that direction. The building itself, we're planning to do, it would be a type three construction, is wood framed. And what we're allowed within, you stay within a 12,000 square foot spacing. We're allowed to be able to do wood frame, which is fire rated framing on the outside, and we would not have to do this in the building. Up grossing 14,000 square feet, that's also covering the walkway going through, that couple of little small little bump outs. But what we could do is have fire rated walls between it. Lighting might be a question. We're not really sure what to do for lighting. Really, the property is not used in the evenings. It's really more accent lighting, I would say, or mercy lighting. Or should there be staff at this hour leaving? We want to make sure we have the safety lighting and whatever lighting is necessary for the parking spots. We don't, we're not looking to create new signage at the road. We're going to keep everything just status quo. And we want, we want to stay within the, the zoning requirements as far as the lighting that you guys are looking for for parking area. We're not looking at creating additional.
What kind of lighting is there now?
If I, I don't believe there's any parking lot lighting right now. I believe there is building lighting that's lighting up the parking area. I believe there might be lighting at the road or the tarmac sign that's there. There's also a cross on thought of the sanctuary, which I think, I know, I put it up, it's backlit. So it's not too lit, but it's, it's LED lighting and it's backlit, so it's more giving it more of a glow. Questions?
Okay, well, yeah, one of my big comments was that the site plan that they, well, first of all, it sounds like this board approved that sanctuary addition a couple of years back. Anyone remembers it, but it was subject to site plan approval, I'm assuming, and you were here?
Yeah, you know, I was, you know, and.
How long ago was that?
It's, it's.
Three years.
Okay. Right. So the, I mean, the site plan that they submitted, that I looked at in my comments, that they submitted at the deadline for the meeting, was that previous plan with this kind of sketched on it. So there was some material from, it's related to that old plan that I think it just needs to be eliminated. Or if you're going to use this as the new site plan going forward, that sounds fine. I mean, it's, I think we need to digest it a little bit and take a harder look at it, because what I had was just a sketch plan. So if this is what you want to present as the actual site plan that gets referred out, I don't know if we're going to be able to be in a position to do that tonight. But, you know, it sounds like you did a lot of work to create a, a new plan. I just haven't had a chance to look at it until just now. So that was the big comment. And it does have a book table and all that. You're showing that you're going to be complying with zoning. For the parking, are you going to actually be creating this new lot that is going to be paved or is it just, with stormwater issues or?
I know this, that with, over the summer, the church got blessed from, I think, the highway or, you know, with a, a ton of, of, what is it? You know, the bindings, you know, as being put down as a temporary. I would say that I don't have an answer for you to be, to be straight up, what they're planning on doing as far as blacktopping. That would be the final icing on the cake.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're going to be, because right now it's gravel, it's not paved. So if you're going to be actually formalizing it as a parking lot with striping and paving, it would need to have some stormwater considerations.
Yeah.
So I don't know, there's a civil engineer that's going to take a look at that and, you know.
So I, I have a civil engineer, Tim Lynch, who's working with me as far as site planning and, and on that end of it. And I also have Dave Beckwood out of Pleasant Valley that's helping me with the engineering and code review.
Okay. Any thoughts on buses coming or going?
Yeah, so there, there are, right, currently, right now, five mini buses. And talking with the principal as of today, she doesn't think that there's really going to be an increase in buses. However, she did mention to me, there's one bus out of Pine Plains. She's thinking that's going to go from the mini size bus to probably maybe a larger bus is what her guess is. But otherwise, she's thinking no change in buses. But currently, right now, the way it seems to work out, every time I've been in there, there's a mix between parents coming in and picking up their kids, and then the mini bus is going. And what's happening is the bus, say this is, say this is Salt Point down here. The buses will come in, stop, pick up the elementary kids, and then currently come around, pick up the high school kids, and come back, and then pull back out. So there's a nice, nice traffic flow right here.
Now, the traffic comes from town to Clinton because the entrance is actually within the town of Clinton. Want to point that out too. There's the tax parcel line there, like, is also the municipal boundary line.
Would any of this construction, including the proposed septic areas, be on the parcel that is in the town of Clinton? Or all of this is in the town of Washington?
That's a good question.
Doesn't look like it.
I think we're, we're still staying, everything staying on the one property.
See where that pond is in the south end there?
That's where Clinton is?
That line is, yeah, that property line, that's the Clinton line. Yeah, so all the traffic's actually, you know, coming in off Salt Point Turf, which is in Clinton. So it's, you know, not all of it's coming from Washington. It would be a little, few turns to make, right? So most of the traffic's coming in off that entrance and it's in a different town. So interesting. So I do have, you know, as part of the referrals, I think the, the parcel, because of that issue sharing with Clinton, it also shares with Stanford. They're going to be notified when there's a public hearing, the requirements, if they're notified of it, so they can comment. I don't know if we're ready to set that yet. If we, you know, it sounds like we're just kind of workshopping the site plan tonight. And we haven't really been, nothing's really been submitted yet. So.
Yeah.
You know, I think the fire department might want to look at it too, once they have the plan for, if they're thinking about putting a road around the buildings.
It just so happens that the chief of the park happens to go to that church. So it'd be good to have him.
Yeah.
Right on board.
We can make that referral too. But I think once we get this, I mean, is this ready to be submitted now or are you still kind of like tweaking it or?
I know it's, do you want to take a closer look at the property? I mean, it's, I could.
I don't know if I'm going to be in a position tonight to, to accept it. You know what I mean? Like usually it's like.
I'm happy to, you know, submit it as, as it is. It's.
Usually the requirement is, you know, you get it in at the deadline for the meeting and I have a couple of weeks to review and comment and Sarah as well and.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to put this on for public hearing.
I don't think we can, yeah, I think you should be, you should try to, you should aim to get these, this site plan, you know, in a package that's submitted by the December meeting deadline. And at that meeting, we could take action and referring and.
Yeah.
And if you're going to put that in around the back and it would be good to put that on, if you have that detailed out enough, it would be good to see that for that whole run.
Right. One of the, one of the things that we're constantly looking at, I've got Tim Lynch working with me. And what we want to do is we want to go in the back there with an excavator. We want to do some test pours just to see what we're up against as far as with the rock and stuff. That's why I didn't want to, you know, quickly say, oh, we're going to definitely do this and do this, and this is going to be this way. I need to kind of get an idea of just how much rock we might end up putting in, like a, a ready rock retaining wall, just a, or we might have solid rock which would work for a nice retaining wall for us naturally.
Good. Anything else for this? No, I think they should work to get it in for the December deadline and we could call it the site plan at that meeting and comment on it appropriately, refer it out at that point, and maybe set a hearing for Jenny.
So I'll fine tune the details. And any comment from you guys as far as lighting? Just, just.
I think lighting is important because it's one of the site plan review elements of the code, so signage too. But, um, yeah, if, if you're going to be proposing lighting in the parking lot, if you think it's necessary. It sounds like there's none there now and it might be.
I'd like to.
A safety issue and important. So if you want to show it, show it.
And as, as you heard us talking with the, the last applicant, we're concerned with lighting and that it'd be down, like dark sky approved, and that it did not be running all night and all those kinds of things.
Right. Time, it shuts off a certain time. Yep, yep, I get it.
Will he need a variance to go to 42 feet?
Yes. Yeah, I think, you know, if you're going to be going over the 35 feet, there's no negotiation there. It's just not in compliance with the zoning, so.
And because it's, it's not like in stone at this point, you know, the, the desire is to do something a little bit better that's not going to create a problem in the future.
How thick is a turf roof that that creates?
The roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, so because if you think of it, because the building is 60 feet wide, let's just take half the building. If you're going to create a triangle for, for roof pitch, you can figure it's probably going to rise up maybe about 12 to 15 feet. If this is going to be something where we're doing like a six or a seven pitch, that means for every 12 inches going out or for every one foot going out, we're rising six or seven inches in height. I didn't want to do anything shallow, like three pitch. Not only is it not really designed to shed water quickly, but just, you know, it's a look, to look, try to create something that gets you a little bit more emphasis. We're not looking for the building to overpower. That's one of their, to be honest with you, one of the concerns with the pastor. He just loved so much what we did in front. He didn't want that to be something that was dynamic. So I'm concerned, I'm just making sure that the roof lines stay within a reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, these are all flat roof buildings. The, the rendering that you showed in the submission I looked at had a flat roof on it. So.
Yeah. I'd say flat, it's got probably maybe a quarter inch per foot pitch, and we'd pitch it off to the back.
To exceed what the code says, who?
ZBI.
The ZBI team.
Okay. Anything else that you can do? We'll look forward to seeing you back there next month.
Fantastic. Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give these with you, let people work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you get the dark sky business done with the, with the over?
You mentioned it. Yeah. We have, we have. Sure. Actually, I've been, I prefer the digital. I can ask them to send me that. It's fine.
No, it's too rough.
But if it's going to change between now and the December deadline, I don't want to look at it. I will, you know what?
That's something I think we need to update that. We don't need to.
I, that's quite, that's all my things. That's my one, because it's my points.
Do you want to take some back?
I will take.
Could you use them?
But if you don't want.
Okay.
Okay, so James has something.
Yeah, James, you have, we want to talk about the, the harvest. What about the trash?
Oh, I didn't, that was on the agenda.
No, we sent the letter.
So, I don't know if you got a chance to look through the letter, but just brief background, they applied for building permit. They applied for building permits pre-existing, not in use, doesn't have site plan approval. The expansion change would have needed a site plan approval. So in my determination, wants the decision to go to the planning board. Section 481B of the zoning code does allow for a recommendation to be made by the building inspector in case of minor changes requiring a building permit. This is a 400 square foot workshop addition to an existing building to try to modernize their space. Doesn't add anything to the property, doesn't change any uses. Some of those buildings have done their sense of the move to this area and they're trying to work in those conditions. So my recommendation is that in this space, no further site plan approval be needed, but obviously that's entirely your call. Some of those buildings have done their sense of move to this area, and they're trying to work in those conditions. So my recommendation is that in this space, no further site plan approval be needed, but obviously, that's entirely your call.
Is this just on the up to Mike average?
No.
He's over at Orbis.
Oh, Orbis, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
So is there a requirement on our part to, is this just a no action or a negative response?
I didn't know this was on.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I just would want, I don't know what the code says, I don't look at it. I mean, I trust James's interpretation, and so if, that.
James, are you asking for this not to come in front of the planning board, for you to be able to approve it as the building inspector?
Yes, I'm making that recommendation.
He's letting us know about it, and his recommendation is that it doesn't come in front of the planning board, that they just proceed with the construction.
Well, Sarah, I, quickly, if I'm wrong, sweetie, another question about this, that's, James is, that's what his, he's the code enforcer, so you're, you're really the ones to make the call, there's a concern that they refer, and they don't have a concern. But does it say you have to get permission from the planning board?
Under section four eighty-one B, I make that recommendation to the planning board, but it's ultimately their decision in a case like this.
So I think it's separate from other, where you are independent, and if you make a determination and somebody disagrees, they would appeal, but here you're requesting their permission. So then I think it could just be a motion to approve the request if they wanted to. I don't see any issue, I trust your discretion. But if you wanna review it more, then they would do it in December.
I can, if, if this is what you're recommending, in the trust of professional, that's great.
I agree.
Jim, Andrew? No comment. Sounds like a good, you know, sounds. Do you need a resolution?
I would just do a motion to authorize.
Mr. Finley.
Yes. And do you have the property address?
Yes, I do.
I would just include that in the motion so that it's clear.
Zero four seven Sharon Towne.
Will you prep the motion for a second?
Just a question, they're just consulting, they're consulting a.
A small workshop addition to an existing structure, they're moving their operations inside the draft, the old building into a newer space.
And all he's, he's gonna get a building permit, and you're going to inspect it, and an electrical inspector will come, and all that's gonna be.
So let me rephrase, it would be a motion that no further site plan, right, is required?
Yes.
At the address three oh four seven.
Sharon Towne.
So we have a motion to approve this resolution. So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, do you know, thank you very much. Any other business for this board?
Yes, I know it's been a long meeting, so I'll try to be brief, but.
Well, Tuesday.
I just wanted to say a few things. Led by Leslie, a group of people met, met last week to talk about changes that need to be made to the website, to, and also to think about changes to our processes and forms at ZBA, at, and for planning board. We, Leslie, Mary Alex, Frank Rattle for zoning, James Finley, and Kristen and I met. And out of that, a couple of things came, came out. Frank and I are both going to review the procedures and the paperwork that planning board and zoning board use, and see if we can streamline things, suggestions we might have, and changing some of, or improving some of those forms. I'll make, before I do anything like that, I'll make draft revisions to our forms and email them to everybody, and then we can approve them. I won't just put forms up on the, on the internet or do anything without approval. James is working on a set of frequently asked questions for building zoning, and I'm gonna work on some for planning, so if anybody has any ideas for that, things that you think we should add to that, I love other input. A few planning board specific items came up. One was this eight copies.
Yeah, look at all this wasted work and paper.
Every week, every month, this is. So we have, and it's because there were always seven members, and then there's an extra copy for the file, but we don't use the hard copies anymore.
No.
So we were talking about a number that might work, you know, need at least one or two on the desk sometimes, and to have an extra in the file, so we were thinking of making it four copies. And ask, even that sounds like a laugh, but we just wanna make sure. And then saying that more may be requested of a, of somebody in certain cases, because there's, who knows, there might be a situation where we do want those hard copies. So what do you think of that?
Do we need any paper copies for the files or?
We do, we do.
At least the original in the file, to the ZBA members, they like to have the hard copy mailed to them, as well as I email, just like I do with you. So that's not really an issue, their folders are thin.
But we don't touch them, they sit in the file.
This was for the DLC, and this is, this, it's difficult to file, it takes up a lot of room, it's really not necessary to have this many copies. So, you know, quite a few of the files are, are like this.
Well, just two copies.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the thinking was four was one for the filing, perhaps one or two for you all to refer to, and then one, because sometimes we have to refer to plans to county, or we have to refer them, not going back to the applicant to ask them for any additional copies. We could just have one for you all to refer to, but if you have a full board, and there's each side.
That was how we were sort of thinking, one on each side of the desk.
The county's taking digital, right?
Sometimes I try to send.
Okay, yeah, sometimes.
Some are just, you do send paper.
The county, the county asks for like one.
Any reduction from the eight is good, I'm in favor of any reduction.
I think we go to four, and then we'll see, and then if next year we wanna change it, we can always change it, so.
One thing on the forms to keep in mind, to note, the EAF, that's part of the power standard forms, is the old form, needs to come out. The state updated them in twenty nineteen.
So, it's on my list, I literally noticed that the other day, yeah.
So that's just.
Actually, Erin, we talked about, you know, we didn't wanna, you know, once we're going on this process with the plant, and you need to.
Sure.
You need your friends just input, and if there's anything that you've seen thus far in our process that you think could be streamlined or improved now, like.
That's the big one, yeah.
That'd be terrific.
You just gotta get a new.
Just to add to what Susan was saying, this is all, these are the recommendations from PACE, you're not, you know, this isn't something that we came up with, this is the very specific recommendations, which came from all of us and all our input, areas where we can improve, plus there are sort of updated best practices on what we can do to improve our process, so.
So.
I wanna thank Susan for all of her work, I know you all know she's been doing an exelon of work, but.
Let's find Leslie, Leslie's doing all.
Thank you very much.
But one other thing was this requirement that we have that documents be put in two weeks before a meeting for anyone to be on the agenda. And we're very good about applying that for the first time they come before us, they can't get on the agenda. But a lot of times, to accommodate people, we allow things to happen within a two-week timeframe of a meeting. And now we have consultants and attorneys who need to, to review these things, so the thought was to make, to ask everyone that we have a strict enforcement of that two-week policy, no matter where they are on the stage of, of this.
I like it.
You like it?
Definitely, for Kristen, if she's running two boards.
Exactly, it's, it's, for you guys and Kristen, I think that will be necessary, so I'm gonna add that sort of stuff to my checklist that's on the, that's on the website, so hopefully people get the message.
We're also gonna include, Erin, your recommendation about the structures, how we put that, that's not something we want back, that's after the fact, and how that property can anticipate what those.
Yeah, I mean, with the turn, planner, two attorneys, a wetlands consultant that comes on sometimes, at seven fifty is gonna go pretty quickly, so.
But also going back to what you mentioned about paper, we just had a nice TV monitor here, and everything digital, and I don't know, we're in the Stone Age here, and if you were any corporate presentation, we'd have something nice here, they could sit here and they could draw attention to it.
That would be great.
And then we don't need any paper.
You wanna talk about whatever, I mean, that's what's so nice about looking at.
That would be the ideal, but even something as basic as an easel, like, we really should have something where people are not standing here going like this.
Look at the monitor.
See if we can get that.
Person stands way over there. People gotta leave. That's against the monitor.
Yeah.
I can just say already, I think our processes have gotten tighter and more efficient, and I thank Kristen for that, you really held the, you know, held the door there, and Erin for just being, providing such good information, and thank you Susan for jumping in on this with Leslie and the whole team, it's amazing, it's really exciting.
Yeah.
Any other business?
I hate to say this, you may have done it already, but the wetlands ordinance and the wetland application don't quite match up with spots. The differences, I think Jeff was working on it at one time.
What do you mean?
Well, it'll say that you want two-foot contours in one place, and the other one will say five-foot contours, stuff like that.
Okay.
Little languages that don't quite gel there, and I, I think we had discussed this at one time, I think with Jeff, I'm pretty sure, you see Jeff still, don't you? I think we discussed the fact that the wetlands ordinance has to take precedent over the wetland application.
Yeah, but the wetland application should be accurate, and should be saying, should be asking for that information.
Be step width, you can't have two different requirements, as people get the wetland application, and they don't read the wetlands ordinance, I don't blame them, and so you wind up with discrepancies then.
That's just, just the sort of thing that we're trying to catch here, you know, trying to.
Howard, can you? More, Howard, but if, you know, if you, if you remember what that is, and you can vote, because I know you.
Well, Jeff did that.
Okay.
So you worked with Jeff on that.
Yeah, no, I'm sure he has it, but I don't know when that was, you have a long constitutional memory.
It's been a while.
Okay, all right, so maybe we, if.
It's got maybe in the files somewhere.
We'll give another one in a minute. We'll turn it over again.
Oh, okay. One other thing to make.
I would, because I do think it does matter if you abstain.
That's why I'm asking.
So if the board would just.
We have a motion to, again, is everyone approve the minutes from the last meeting? We have a motion to approve the minutes. Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, so that carries, thank you.
I just have one more thing, and since the last meeting, we had the public hearing on the shore application, and we've gone into this too much, but there was at least one neighbor who had concerns about it, and maybe to appease the neighbor, but there was an agreement to put in some screening, and anyway, the neighbor's not satisfied with it, and is that anything that has to do with the planning board, or do we have any further role in this, I guess is my question.
Where we, that's the one where they were drawing in, it was a hill, and they were drawing in the tree.
They drew something in on a site, on the site.
At the meeting.
At the meeting, yeah.
Was there a discussion as to what kind of trees? I don't recall.
Not really.
I don't remember either.
Well, it's in the meeting, I remember reading, it was David Stack, right? It was, and this is the conversation over that screening.
Yeah.
And they just said they were going to work it out between the two of them.
And he's not, but nothing's been planted yet, right?
No, it's already been planted.
Oh, it has.
Small trees.
Oh, boy.
It was put on the site plan as part of the condition. I haven't seen the final, so I'll coordinate with Kristen to review what was actually submitted, but to my recollection, and in speaking with Erin, and based on the minutes, there wasn't an agreement on the height. The only agreement that I remember measurement wise was that the applicant was against putting it within one hundred feet of the buildable area where the house and the accessory structure, right, are going up. So it was very vague, there weren't many details. I think that the planning board has met its obligation, I think the applicant also has met his obligation. I can look into it further as far as the guidelines we discussed, or I think you mentioned in an email, if it's based on the maturity of a tree like five years down the road, I think it would be actionable against the planning board to require anything more, because that is, that is an investment, and I also think that the neighbor has a very sizable property on which he is not limited at all from putting up his own trees. So I think that the applicant made a concession and agreed to resolve the issue, but to the extent that there is anything beyond that, that's a dispute, I think that would then become a civil dispute. He could contest the site plan, but I don't think that there would be any legitimacy to that.
But I also, my recollection, if that application was for accessory use, it was already a structure that was built.
Yeah.
It was in process.
Adding a bathroom or, or a kitchen, that, or some things, or naked, so it wasn't expanding the footprint, he already had a permit for that, which he's allowed to do. I think that the landscaping piece was a courtesy to the neighbor, and they were gonna work it out, and so we sort of, you know, really just trying to help that bring that whole piece together, with that conversation between the two of them said, you know, we'll sort of, I don't think we made the approval contingent on the landscaping.
Yes, I mean, it's on the.
It's on the plan.
Okay, well, but, but I don't think we were specific, so I don't know, I guess it could be, I don't know, I think you're, you know, about your legal interpretation, I just don't think, I, the original application didn't really, wasn't really asking the planning board to even opine on the landscaping at all, at all.
No.
It was already there, right?
Yeah, well, so.
It's a, sort of a.
So it was a, building permit was issued.
Yeah.
And mid-construction, he decided that he wanted to use that accessory building for his mother.
Yes.
So that resulted in a special permit being needed for an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
There was no new structures proposed, it was already part of his plan, but he was gonna use that accessory structure for a unit. So it required a special permit, it required a public hearing, which that property owner next door used as the vehicle to come in and say, look, I'm seeing this being built above me, and I have concerns, so.
I think it's already structured, actually, I think it's, it's already framed.
It's framed out, yeah. There's pictures, it's not done yet, but it's, it's been under construction for many months.
Not on sight, at least not the word.
It's big, it's very big, and it takes up the whole ridge. But, you know, that's his property, so.
His property, I mean.
That, that was already going forward, that's not what the planning board was, was for. I just was contacted separate outside of the meeting, and I tried not, don't do anything outside of the meeting, and so I wanted to bring it in the meeting.
Yeah.
And say that I was contacted, and I wanted to follow up to see if the planning board had any further role in this, and I wanted to close a loop with the neighbor that contacted me about being dissatisfied with the, with the.
And I was contacted by Sam Shore, told him that I wasn't at the meeting, had to acknowledge and.
Right, yeah, I, I think it's appropriate to have everything, I think what you're doing is actually correct, and Sarah, maybe it's worthwhile you see if there's anything else, since it was part of the final decision.
Yes, so once I get that, I'll review it, but I do think in the absence of any parameters or specifics as to heights, types, spacing, I don't think any of that was there, I think what happened is what Leslie said, was just trying to appease the group, and they were both amicable, walking out.
It was a handshake.
But he, but he did make it sound like he was going to screen it. He, he used the word screen.
I saw them, yeah.
He really made it seem like.
But it's, it's difficult to, to purchase fully mature evergreens.
Yeah. That would be astronomical, a lot of money.
So my, you know, what I've seen, I've done a lot of applications for different towns where they require screening, and they show a visual assessment, like a photo simulation of here's what it's gonna look like at install, here's what it's gonna look like five years later, it's gonna grow, these, the trees that he put in aren't just bushes, I think they're gonna grow into mature trees at some point, it just has to wait.
Walks in Olmsted, did not put full grown trees in the park, and it would be beautiful at a hundred years.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up because I was contacted.
I'll check into it. Maybe it's worth just seeing if there's anything else, I don't, I don't know exactly Maybe it's worth just seeing if there's anything else. I don't, I don't know exactly how we phrased that resolution, whatever the decision was, so. Just a little housekeeping issue.
And it wasn't a site plan approval, it was a special permit and because of the fact that it already had a building permit, we didn't get into the nitty gritty of everything that's required of a site plan, the code, because you had a permit.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
What were you going to say?
I did speak with Ed Mortensen and Gary Seferi and Jeff Dastert, about our process over having rotating chairs. It does become a bit confusing, this is feedback for the public, typically administratively. We even saw tonight, you know, there was someone here for a public hearing who was referencing a chairman that wasn't the chairman for this meeting, who, so I said to Ed, if he wants to have one of you kind of be his wingman, point person of a certain application from start to finish, you know, that's fine. I think Ed, Ed was explaining to me that his reasoning for doing it was to just have more kind of, you know, buy-in from the group and have people really, you know, dig in and enjoy participating, which is a terrific, you know, sentiment. But it's just for administrative and actually even legal purposes, just having, not having that continuity of the, of the chair, it just can become a little cumbersome. So he will be the chair of record going forward, just so.
Fantastic.
Although you did a terrific job.
Yeah, everybody's.
That's great, I thought I was going to do a decision.
We're not on anybody's performance, who all are terrific, but it just can be a little confusing for the public, so. And then Kristen, you don't have to worry that for your minutes, or my minutes, actually, that I report to the town board of who's.
Do I have to sign these documents?
Yes.
So we do that. Any, any other business? Can we have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved, thank you.
Seconded.
All in favor? Sorry, I, I was on the old meeting schedule.
You showed her Brandon's seven thirty.
Next one.
I was even three minutes early.
Oh, my God. Next.